All set.
Okay, all right, it's March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, seven thirty P M. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Members present Bob Shabbat, John Teahan, and Rebecca Sanoski. See what we have a public hearing A P Z dash twenty-two dash four proposed zoning regulations, section twelve point five. New strategic development zone S D Z applicant, the Planning and Zoning Commission. Take it away, Mike.
So the hearing was open at the last meeting and we had a couple of of questions. Related to some of the structuring of the actual organization of the document. And we also included on both sides. The mention that had come up previously by one of the commissioners about fire suppression. So I've made those those specific changes to the the final draft, which is in the with with the agenda. The the structure, the organization. I think that that, you know, it didn't change dramatically because we're gonna integrate this into the zoning regs. And I think I mentioned, we're trying to re draft the zoning regs into a format that's more. Technology friendly, so the specific numbering of the sections will stay the same, twelve point fifteen, et cetera. But the, you know, subsection A subsection, you know, point one, we're gonna look to figure out how to get that in. So that it meets the existing. Structure of the the zoning reg document. That's why you don't see that, but we will integrate that with the new regs.
Okay, any, any questions or comments from the commission? And I'm gonna open it to the public. Any questions, comments from the public?
I have a question.
Who is this?
This is Kathy Demers, forty-eight Mason Road. I do have just a quick question. I'm still trying to understand. Is this a substitution for the current regulations? For example, if I wanted to build something in a design commercial zone. Is this a substitute for that? Or is it a pathway through that? I'm still trying to understand how this differs from the current regulations that we have for design, commercial and designed industrial.
So. This is a new zoning category, which is. Separate and distinct from all the other zones in that it is. A floating zone. It does not apply to any one property. There are no bounds. You have to apply to become eligible. It's not a substitution of any of the other requirements. This is a different pathway to achieving approval for the specific projects or. Which are outlined in the eligibility. So Dollar General would not have been eligible for this. They would come in under this traditional DC zone. But a large scale project. In key areas would come in under this requirement in lieu of the design, commercial or design industrial zone.
And a and a quick question in addition. So, Mike, those were traditional pathways like DC and DI before. The design, commercial, design, industrial. When you say in this new. Strategic development zone that you have, you can follow a traditional application path versus proactive. Is that traditional application path? Just for the S D Z? Or is that, are we referring to the traditional, for example, design, commercial path?
It would be the traditional path outlined in the S D Z. So that's.
Okay.
Twelve fifteen four A.
Right, okay.
Which is the traditional process for a special development district. How how you would normally land a special development district. That's the traditional.
Okay, what you mean strategic instead of special developments, all right, you mean strategic? That's the word you're using strategic. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the zoning, the zoning scheme here is a is a special development district. That's what it would be referred to in any town that you're in. We're calling our special development district a strategic development zone. So the traditional process is that is how you would land a development district in any town. We've created a separate process, which is the proactive, which is unique to Wellington. So I know it's thrown around a lot of terms, but. Hopefully that clarifies it a little.
Yeah, thank you. And. One other quick question. Under the open space requirement for this new zone. I'm just gonna try to go back to the page. It's page nine. Section E landscaping and open space minimum of fifteen percent of the total S D Z acreage shall be set aside as green space for recreation, conservation purposes, and so on. Do we currently have an open space requirement for design, commercial and design industrial as well? Are they the same?
We don't require the fifteen percent.
Okay, so that's only in this new strategic development zone.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ralph.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Ralph Tullis, forty-seven Village Hill Road. This question is kind of directed at Mike, who might be able to answer it. Isn't the S D Z in a way an overlay over? DI and DC. And let me pose a hypothetical. I have a hundred acre parcel. I'd like to create an industrial park, a major, major industrial park, but it's currently zoned already. Walk me through the steps to apply S D Z to that, or is it in conjunction with DI? Do the two work together in many respects, or are they completely independent? And what do I wind up with in the end?
So they are not, we don't. We look at the underlying zone and parcel size to determine if if a project or property would be eligible to come in under the S D Z. So they would need to meet those eligibility criteria. So if you had a hundred acre parcel that you wanted to develop an industrial park. On, you would be eligible. If it were in the the DI zone, but you could also be eligible based on the size. The process to to obtain approval would be a little bit dependent on which pathway you wanted to pursue. But we are not looking at the criteria in the DI zone when we evaluate. This is a separate and distinct zone, so that's why the first step in both pathways involves the. The zone change application, because this is still treated as a traditional zone change. You're applying to land this zone on your property. And then we move from there based on which process you want to follow.
Okay, that still doesn't answer the question of what do I wind up with with when the dust clears and everything's approved? Do I have a DI zone, or do I have an S D Z zone?
You have an S D Z zone, and the main, the main component with what? Special development districts are different from the the D I D C zone or R eighty or any of these traditionally Ucadian zones in that. The the zone, once it's approved, the specific development standards underneath that project become the zoning requirements. So if we approve a project at a hundred acre industrial park with a hundred and fifty foot front yard setback, that becomes the requirement on that parcel. It it does not follow the underlying R eighty, DI or DC zone. So the concept plan that is approved effectively becomes. A set of zoning regs for that property, which is why modification of that is treated differently. So we are, we are providing flexibility in that we're allowing people to develop properties. In a more reasonable manner, and we're giving them, you know, credits for things like lead infrastructure and and other things. But. Once the plan becomes approved, the specific parameters of that plan essentially become the requirements.
Okay, so is this not going to permit any subsequent development of that? Hundred acres that are in an S D Z zone?
It would permit it either A, under the existing criteria. So they are existing site plans, so that's why we have the section in here for modification. So they would come back to modify their their master plan. And by modifying the master plan, they are essentially modifying the criteria for that property.
But that particular property under as its own unique S D Z zone?
Exactly.
Okay, I'm just trying to get my arms around how this would work. And my experience with P Z C has been you really don't understand the ramifications of your regulations until you actually have to apply it to a real application. And that's when you find the shortcomings or the holes or whatever in what you've written.
Yeah, I I think that the the key here is special development districts are one hundred percent discretionary. So if the commission were to see an application and they thought they said, well, geez, these folks have have followed the regulations, but we don't like it. They don't have any obligations under the statutes or the zoning regs or any case law, nothing to approve this, because it's totally discretionary. That's based on the fact that there are underlying zoning regs which already exist, D I, D C, R eighty. So if they deny this, an application for an S D Z, they have not. They have not removed the development potential from the property, which is the key when you're talking about these types of things. So they don't need to move forward with this if they see an application they're not comfortable with.
I get that, and I assume that's for the initial. All right, I I'm gonna drop it there. It's gonna get too complex. If I go any farther with my hypotheticals. Thanks, Mike.
Mike, I have a question. How many, how many municipalities and towns in Connecticut have these? Zones right now?
I don't know exactly. I mean, they're they're fairly common. You know, it is, it is a, it is a fairly common way to deal with. Larger scale or strategic development of properties. So many towns all across the state have them. It's it's not like we're in a ten percent category. I would say greater than fifty percent probably have at least one of these on the books.
Okay, thank you. All right, further questions from the public? Further questions from the commission? Comments? Okay, I'm I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing for P Z dash twenty-two dash four. All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, item B. Public hearing P Z dash twenty-two dash five. Amin special permit addition to existing bottling structure, one thirty-six Penny Hill Road. Owner Patricia Castles, E T A L applicant Sean Castles.
All right, good evening. I'm Sean Castles. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Yeah, we're here. I'm here on behalf of my family in Village Springs Water. We're looking to construct a new addition to our facility. Approximately one hundred and twenty feet long by sixty feet wide with a twenty by forty loading dock. At one thirty-six. We submitted some plans today that should be up as well for the actual the building.
Mike, can you put this up?
Yep, you wanna see architecturals or site plan?
Both.
All right, we'll start with the site plan. So hopefully you can, you can see this. I don't wanna steal Sean's thunder, but you may, this may look familiar for to some of you. This is an existing site plan. This was a previously approved. Project essentially obtained, planning and zoning obtained wetlands approvals. The wetlands approval is still active. The planning and zoning approval is not, which is why the same site plan is in front of you now.
This does look vaguely familiar. How how long ago was this submitted?
I believe this was in two thousand sixteen.
Okay. So you just decided to move forward now rather than back?
Yeah, you know, we we wanted to proceed. We we did add on in oh four and oh seven, a small addition. In two thousand sixteen, we are going to as well, and then we, for certain reasons on our own, we just decided it wasn't the right time to do it. And then obviously COVID hit in twenty twenty, and here we are in twenty twenty-two looking to proceed.
How's business picking up?
Our business is good. You know, it's obviously a tough time. For everybody in business, but we're surviving.
Good.
And. Yeah, so this is, you know, something we've really been looking forward to getting started if possible, and. Looking forward to it.
Okay, any questions on that part from anyone in the commission?
We didn't see the architecturals.
Not yet. That's the site plan.
One sec.
Sure.
All right. Should see the site plans now or the architectural plans now.
That's a front view. We have four different views for you on the architecturals. That's a side view. Another side view, and then the last one is a floor plan and basically an overhead. You can see to the left is our existing. Structure to the left and to the right would be the new. It would be all in siding to match into the property. It's a, it's a wood structure, not a steel structure. An asphalt roof. We're gonna try to blend it in as much as we can into the property.
Okay. Questions from like or comments from the commission? From the public? Yes, Ralph.
Being a little bit familiar with the evolution of Village Springs, I I certainly. Would like to lend my support to this project and. Help a. A hometown business keep going. It was in a battle early on when they first established their facility there. And I think that the neighborhood has adjusted and everything, as far as I know, has been going fine with them, so. I I would support this application.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the public?
Sorry about that.
My dog will start next. She's already been whining. All right. I I don't have any further questions or comments, so doesn't look.
The only thing, if I, if I could just add, so we did, he did provide to us all the certified mailing, so for the notifications to Butters. And this is an ex, this is a. An addition to the storage part of the property. It's, this is not changing the fundamentals of what they do. So it's not as if they're adding a new use. They're now, they're not adding a new. Component of the process that they aren't already doing. This is largely, and Sean will agree or disagree, this is largely to provide capacity so they can get rid of some of the trailers that are on the property, which are providing some of that storage. So this is not facilitating all kinds of new employees. There will be really no change to the operation. And and so I just wanted to get that out there.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to close public hearing P Z dash twenty-two dash five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right, public hearing C P Z dash twenty-two dash seven. Zone change from R eighty to DC, design, commercial, twenty-five Mahaliak Road. Owner C O B Wellington LLC applicant William Clark. We have the applicant.
I see. Chris Barr and Paul. Let me see. I don't see anybody else here, and I don't see anybody with that name. One second. So. There's.
I'm here representing twenty-five Maliak.
Okay, so Chris Barr is is representing it, Mike.
Yep. Chris is. I forget who actually who submitted the application. Are you gonna be providing the background or the, I forget the gentleman who prepared the the plan for you?
Right, Todd did the surveys and the plan on that. And that was a Clark, I believe.
Yeah, okay, so if he's not gonna be here, do you wanna just give a sort of an overview?
Yeah. Yep. So we're just looking to change over from the R eighty zone to the DC zone. Pretty much make any potential additions to the property a little easier at this point. You know, everything around us is currently a DC zone, so. Just wanna get it updated, so if we do decide to go forward with any type of additions or or so forth, that we can do this. The property's been a garage setting for, oh, probably roughly about seventy years. It's always been a commercial. Unit, never had any type of residential abilities to it, so.
So what's be, what's going on on the property now currently?
It's currently an auto repair facility. We've been there for approximately four years.
All right, so we're we're simply looking to the the request is just to change the zoning?
Correct.
Being added?
No, not this time enough.
Mike, all around that, that that's a design, commercial now?
Yeah, so and I'll I'll give you, I guess, a little bit of history. This is actually in my. At my suggestion, they had come into the office because their their business is doing well and they'd like to make, do an addition. But the property being zoned R eighty is completely non-conforming. And he can't expand because of that. So in looking at that. Determine that it it really wouldn't make sense to try to obtain a variance, given that. Many of the adjacent parcels, and I'll pull up the zoning map, are are in the DC, obviously Loves's. And the the properties across across the way, and then as you head further down towards Losi. So I think that this is a more appropriate. Way to handle the use rather than having him try to obtain a variance for every, everything he's he's trying to do on the property. So let me just bring up the zoning layer. So, all right. Well, actually, no, he's got it. He's got it on here, which is a little bit easier to see. All right, share screen. So hope, hopefully you can see this. I'll move it over. This is a an overlay here. And it shows his parcel. So you have the Loves piece, then you have next to Loves is the, I think it's a ten acre piece, which is DC. And then the parcels which are on the inside. Long Turnpike, and then obviously, as you move down the map, you get towards FedEx and the TA. So. It just felt a little like it, it was a more appropriate way to deal with the use than having him consistently have it to request variances. I. I drew this in. I'll make it a little bit easier to see. The red lines represent the setbacks, so you can see here that the entire building is within the front yard setback. So he can't do anything to this building. Without potentially, I mean, potentially put something off the back, but again, because of it's a non-conforming use. The zoning rates wouldn't allow for the expansion of a non-conforming use as an R eighty anyways. So there's virtually nothing he can do without a variance, which is why I suggested he move in this direction.
Okay, I understand. Any, any questions or comments from the commission?
Mike, there's no impact to the wetlands. I saw wetlands a little ways away from there. No impact there.
Yeah, so that that is a function of. The wetlands, which are to the, I guess it's tech, might technically be west, southwest. So if this is approved, if the zone change is approved, I think he has some thoughts for for projects, so he will still. He'll come back to you guys for a special permit, and he would need to get wetlands approval at that point if there was anything there. So this doesn't facilitate any activity.
Okay.
All right, further questions from the commission?
Oh, it's a small, it's a real small lot, less than an acre. How much expansion is allowed, Mike? Eventually, what's the max? How, you know, with surfaces and things like that taken into consideration?
Yeah. I think the main thing that he he picks up an ability to do is. Is is function with a a use that is conforming. I don't know. Yeah, the parcel is about thirty-one thousand square feet, which is, you know, obviously quite small. So I don't know what he would pick up for from a coverage perspective, as far as what he'd be able to do. But I don't know if Chris knows if they've looked at that yet.
It would make life simpler for him, though, you know, moving forward with the business on that parcel.
Yeah, certainly would.
All right, I'm gonna open to the public now. I see Ralph has his hand up. Good, Ralph.
Oh, thank you, Ralph Tullis, forty-seven Village Hill Road. The question I have for you all is. DC zone minimum lot size is eighty thousand square feet. So how can you? Change this to a Z C zone in? It would be contrary to what your regulations require, number one. I personally think. That any use of this property going forward, they're gonna have. A simpler time, perhaps, going to. a simpler time perhaps going to ZBA and getting a variance, because they've, that property, I, I know the history of that property. That's been squeezed by eighty-four multiple times, which is why the parcel is so small. Um, there were numerous takings by the DOT that shrunk that parcel down to the point six, seven acres that it currently is. I, I don't understand how the commission can, can go against what your regulations require for the minimum lot size in a DC zone. Furthermore, that Malach property behind it is currently R eighty. So, uh, you know, you're, you're backed right up to an R eighty zone, now that's not to say that that property might evolve in the future. If, if you were encompassing Moloch's property and this property into a zone change to DC, then I'd, I'd be a little more comfortable with the commission doing this, but, but you're, you're going against your regulations. ZBA is, is pretty much a piece of cake, the only problem is that you've gotta deal with the public hearing and you have to have a good plan. Uh, but otherwise, uh, they're, they're, they understand the evolution and the constraints that get put on properties because of, uh, uh, the expansion of the interstate. If you can satisfy me that, um. You know, you're, you're not violating your own regulations, great, go, go for it. But quite frankly, I think you are.
Mike, you have any comments on this?
I was, well, I don't wanna get into a response about the ZBA, because if you read some of the case law about when a ZBA should grant a variance, it's not exactly encouraging, whether or not he would get one is a totally different conversation, but I, you know, I don't think that a comfort level of whether or not another board may or may not issue an approval should really should, should really affect how we deal with this, because they're unrelated. Um, it's certainly an option for anybody who owns property in town, but, um. Some of the criteria that one needs to satisfy to, to check the boxes, to obtain a variance and demonstrate hardship. They're quite high bars, that's not necessarily how, that doesn't necessarily mean that variances, applications that don't satisfy that get denied in Wellington or in any town, but there, there's, um, not always a connection there, uh, as far as the, the minimum size. I don't have the section in front of me, but I thought there was a, a line that I had read, read about, um.
I don't have it in front of me either, I can go get it.
I, the, basically the total contiguous area, um, but I can, I can look at that. And can get you some more info on that, obviously, there's no one here that's suggesting that the, the commission should willfully disregard the zoning regulations.
Are you looking that up, Mike, or do we wanna? Continue?
Um, yeah, I. I think, let's just continue, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna rush to try to get it done now.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this, uh, public hearing until our next meeting, so we're gonna continue PZ dash twenty-two dash seven. So. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we'll pick this one up on the next agenda. All right, item E, new business, PZ dash twenty-two dash one, special permit renewal, section fifteen. Excavation sand and gravel at Zero River Road, owner applicant Philip Desiato. So is Philip Desiato here?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a continuation of, uh, what we've been doing for sixty-two years. And there's not a lot of material left there, but there's, there's still some, and, uh, we'd like to continue doing what we've done. We've never had any complaints there, um, we feel pretty good about that. And, uh. We've had, uh, different people use it, uh, for, uh. Right now I have two login companies, one, actually one Firewood and the other guy is, uh, the other person is for logs. And. That, that about sums it, um, we just wanna continue what we've been doing for all them years.
Is it, how many years are you saying, sixty years?
Uh, sixty-two we've been there.
Sixty-two years?
Yeah.
All right, nothing different going on than, than what's been going on?
No, not at all.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission? Okay. Again, any questions or comments? Anyone want, wanna make a motion?
I'll move to approve, uh, but I, I don't have the numbers in front of me.
Uh, that would be, uh, PZ dash twenty-two dash one.
I'm gonna move to approve, uh, PZ dash twenty-two dash one.
Second.
Oh, second.
All right, all in favor? Aye, all right, special permit renewals approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, have a good evening.
Okay.
All right, other new business, uh. PZ dash twenty-two dash six, special permit renewal, section fifteen, excavation sand and gravel at sixty-six Navartil Road. Owner Wayne C. Williams, applicant Lynn Golden. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, wanna tell us, uh?
Now, we're just back in for, um, our, our renewal of our sand and gravel from the last time, there is absolutely no changes from the last time we were in for a public hearing, the big changes, of course, was COVID and, uh, our current economy. But there's been no changes since the last approval.
All right, so refresh my memory, is the property active right now?
Currently, it's not, it's not active, we're not doing anything there, we still have our stockpiles. There, but right at the moment, we're not currently taking any material from there.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the commission?
Uh, just one, uh, is, is there been a plan filed for reclamation after the, uh, mining is completed?
There, there's a plan that we have filed as, uh, as we go, if, we were going in there as in, uh, phases. So yes, there is there, I believe.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna, um, make a motion, uh, to approve the, uh, PZ dash twenty-two dash six, the special minute, permit renewal.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to thank everyone on the board there, have a good evening.
All right, you as well. All right, item F, unfinished business, there is none, item G, approval of minutes from March first, twenty-twenty-two.
The, the minutes were dated February fifteenth, was that the right file?
Should've been March first.
Sorry, I dropped my, uh, sound for a minute.
Yeah, the minute, so John has a question whether it's the right set of minutes.
It says, uh, February fifteenth across the top, the, the file name is March first, but it says Feb fifteen.
Is that from the agenda packet or from the website?
Yeah, that's from the agenda. Yeah, those don't look right.
That would not be March first minutes, then. Right, so why don't we just continue this, we'll put it on the next, uh, agenda.
Okay.
And we will have the right ones, hopefully. So we can approve them.
Okay, sorry about that.
All right. Item H, correspondence, you have anything, see it's blank, but.
Yeah, the only thing that we have is the annual renewal, which unless the commission chooses not to, for the Connecticut Planning and Zoning Federation. Towns have been, you guys have been members for a number of years, so we'll renew that membership, um, unless you guys would prefer not to.
I'm not opposed to being a member.
Yeah, sure.
That's all right.
All right. All right, I, public comment, the commission will hear brief comments at this time from anyone wishing to speak, no business can be conducted here, nor can any comments be made about any items on the agenda. Ralph?
Uh, Ralph Tillis, forty-seven Village Hill Road, um, I hadn't really planned to say much tonight, but.
No, I, I can tell.
Yeah, um, back in September, you established a moratorium on cannabis establishments, a six-month moratorium, if I recall correctly. Twenty-first of March would be six months. I don't see anything on the agenda as to whether or not you're going to continue that, or whether you've actually made some progress on regulations applicable to those types of establishments, and that's my only comment.
All right. All right, let's see, uh. Staff report discussion, upcoming special meeting, April first at seven PM.
Yeah, so I just wanted to put that on there to remind everybody that we had sort of mentioned that we were gonna meet, uh, thirty minutes earlier at the next meeting to talk about some of that stuff we're working on for the, um, Affordable Housing Plan. And to respond to Ralph, I, I had on my, uh, my note here that I wanted to just get a sense from you guys on how you wanted to proceed. We had talked about regulations, um, and the structure, and kind of, I think, what the commission's thoughts were in that we would, we would consider something, um, but I don't. So I guess I'm looking for you guys of, do you want me to come to the next meeting with some draft regs, which I have? Uh, first, that we can start that process, or do you want to, um, potentially extend the moratorium? And it's, it's really up to you guys.
Uh.
I'd like to see the rest. Sorry about.
No, that's okay, um, what's, you know, I don't wanna push you into a corner, Mike, uh, what kind of timeframe are you comfortable with, uh, drafting something like that?
I have, um, I have a framework already, um, so.
Okay.
It, it sets out the structure for how we might regulate it, so I could, it wouldn't be a big lift to get the, the basics together for an upcoming meeting, if the commission wanted to see it, and if, thinking we're on the right track, we can kind of flesh it out.
So our, our options, Mike, are we, we can extend, we can look at propose, uh, proposed draft regulations, and our other option is we can opt out of the whole thing, correct? If we wanted to?
Right, so the purpose of the moratorium was to basically give the commission more time to consider what it wanted to do, so you can extend the moratorium. If you think you just, you wanna push this off a little bit, um, you, we can start the process to develop regs, or you can start the process to include cannabis as a prohibited use. Which was essentially the, uh, opting out that you're referring to.
It sure would be nice to get input from townspeople on this one.
You know.
And, and ask the town people for, uh, an, an opinion, can we get a survey going?
Yeah, it's a survey or something, I, I can recall when we had the, uh, smoke shop, or, I don't know.
Well, I remember that, Bob, there, there, maybe times have changed since then, but, uh.
Well, I, I, I'd, I'd like to think so, but, uh, it was, uh, wow, I. It, it was surpris, it was just amazing, the, the, the blowback from the, uh, some of the townspeople. And their concern about buses going by with their stool children on it, and, uh, it was, it was it was quite a spectacular, uh, thing to behold.
And then the shop failed within a couple of years.
Right, so I, I. I, I'm of the opinion that we should move forward with, uh, looking at some regulations. Uh, I think in this day and age, with, uh, what's going on in the other states around us, I think it's, uh. I, I think we should get some regulations and then, uh, ask the townspeople's opinion.
And, and one thing that'd be interesting, Mike, to, to kind of take into account here is just what kind of potential revenues would be in store for the town, because I'm more interested in that, quite frankly, than I am about whether marijuana is good or bad.
Right.
Because you can make the same case with alcohol, really.
Yeah, I, I can.
But what, what's in it for us, if we, what's in it for the town of Wellington? Potentially, you know, financially.
Yeah, um, I was on a, a phone caller at a meeting recently, and one of the things that came up was that, you know, for the towns that are choosing to essentially ban this, um, you know, one of the delivery, one of the, the, um, license types is a delivery, right, so, um, for, if you have specific needs or whatever, and you, you pay someone to deliver, you're buying it from an establishment in another community. The community is retaining a portion of that sale cost as, as tax revenue, which, which is transmitted to that community. And then the person gets in their car and they drive it into your community where you've banned the sale, but there's nothing that would prevent anyone in your town from, from using it, they just have to go outside of your town to get it. So it was kind of an interesting perspective that I, I guess I understood, but I hadn't considered in that way. Um, I believe it's two percent, I, I, of the total revenues from us, from the sales in your community are transmitted to your municipality as incre, it basically goes into the general fund.
Okay. All right, so we, we, we should start looking at, uh, potential draft regulations.
Okay.
No, I agree.
Rebecca, what do you think?
I, I think that sounds fine, I, I'd rather we had something in place before, you know, versus just, hey, no, we're not, or yes, we are, that there's, and then look up.
Well, something to, you know, and, and we, we do need to get some public input through some means.
I think you, the public input is gonna be very important in this, because this could be kind of like when the town was entertaining the idea of the firing rage up on Rubing Road for the state police. I think it's gonna divide and be a big deal as well.
All right, thank you.
The other thing that I would just note is that for the retailers and micro cultivators, that number is capped until the end of twenty-twenty-four, so if we pass these regulations, the most the town can have is one retail location and one micro cultivator. The state has said we, even if we want to, we can't issue more, so if we issue those permits and we decide we don't love the use or that one is enough, you know, and we have until the end of twenty-twenty-four to decide how we wanna handle it from there, if the cap were to potentially go away, but it's set to one per twenty-five thousand, so we, we only get one of those, um, license types.
Okay.
All right. Okay, what else? Oh, back to window, is anything changing with meeting in person, or whatever, Mike, cause, uh?
The, the law expires, the law expires in a month.
Okay.
So, so as of the end of April, the, the, the law that allows for hybrid and, and virtual meetings to occur expires, so in, in the next The law that allows for hybrid and and virtual meetings to occur expires, so in in the next. Four weeks, we will know what obligations we have, if we can continue to have meetings, if we have to have hybrids in a certain way or or what.
Okay, so we'll leave it as is for, you know, for now. And and go from there, but I don't know, I kind of miss the public, you know, in person.
Yeah, so hopefully two meetings from now, we'll know.
Okay.
Good.
Alright, it is eight twenty PM, meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Night, everybody.
Good night.